But was there a thought of inviting the PTA Council and the PTAs to be involved in this?
Some of them are.
Yeah, so a lot of those parents are on the PIAC.
They're on the committee already.
It's usually the same group of parents.
All right.
Funny how that works.
I think there are more parents in each school, so it really should have.
So all those who are active are very aware of this and hopefully they are taking us up on it.
Right, and every school site gave input in their school site meetings that gave input to the LCAP, but these are the two committees that are required. But everyone did have a chance to have input at the school level as well as the district level.
We also recently held a community-wide input meeting where there was an administrator, a staff person, a teacher, and a parent from every school come.
And classified staff.
And a classified staff member too. So that was separate, not a required meeting, but something that just assisted us in helping make this more transparent.
All right.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, then we do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
What do we approve?
We're affirming these committees, I was gonna say.
To affirm the designation of two committees, the PIAC, well, the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee, and the District English Language Advisory Committee to advise the Board on the LCAP, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan.
All right.
Second motion?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposition, okay, another unanimous vote. I should've gone through here in circles to make sure I wasn't missing.
Number six.
Number six, we are in Section 3, Business and Financial Procedures. Number six, Board Resolution 14-04-23, the Education Protection Account. Do you give us a quick description of what that is and why?
Okay, so what this is, is that after the passage of Prop. 30, the funds that are raised from the taxes from Prop. 30, which by the way are not additional monies, they're just collecting the monies that would have been, our budget would have been reduced more by, but instead of being reduced, they are collecting the funds and they put it into the Education Protection Account. And so, and instead of when we get our state aid, we are now getting it from two different pots rather than one pot. And so one of the pots is coming from the educate, because our property taxes don't cover our, the revenues we're supposed to be receiving, we get state aid and the EPA, as it's called, the Education Protection Account collects some of the funds to pays, that pays us. Those funds we cannot use on administrative salaries and administrative salaries basically, or you know, building and such. So we have to actually state what we're gonna use those funds for. And so since it's just taking it out of one pot and putting it in another, we are declaring that those funds are gonna be used for teacher salaries. So teacher salaries get paid to that resource code. And so that's what this resolution says. And as you see, we expect five and a half million dollars of our revenues from the state to come from the Education Protection Account.
Okay.
And then we post this on our website.
Okay.
So it's just moving it into that account, is that what you're saying? Is that's not, you said not additional funds?
It's not additional funds, that is correct.
Chucks.
As a requirement, if you remember, Proposition 30, when it passed, there was a commitment to making transparent how all of the funds are being utilized in each school district. And so this was one of the devices that was used by the authors of the proposition. So every year we declare how we use those funds.
Now, is this money, this is from the increased sales tax?
Yes, and income tax on the top 2%, I believe.
Right.
1%? The top percent?
Not us.
Not us.
I was just gonna say that.
We don't know about that.
The other, the other part.
All right.
If it was me, I would remember.
So the actual account is created by the government, not by us?
Yes, it is.
And then they just pay us from it?
They pay us, the money goes into that account, so we charge the expenditures to that account.
Okay, so our resolution is saying how we're spending that money. Well, you have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt Board Resolution Number 14-04-23, Education Protection Account.
I wanna make sure I understand it correctly, so that is used for teacher salary?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Second.
We have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Okay, and we're always happy to pay teachers.
Definitely.
Hey, Section 4, Certificated Personnel, we have retirement. Do you wanna speak to that? Or shall I just stand up and give congratulations?
We could maybe do both. We do recommend approval of a retirement request from Brenda Smith, who's our Director of Special Education, and it is effective at July 7th of the school year. And we do request a preparation of a letter of commendation for her service with the district. She's worked with us since 2006. And since, I don't know if I wanna stop, since Brenda's here, if anybody wants to say anything, you do want me to go through the other person also?
We can go ahead, go ahead and say the other person, but then we'll, we can speak to Ms. Smith.
Okay. We also recommend approval of a retirement request from one of our teachers who's been here since 1985, Mr. Jason Anderson. And so we do request a resolution be prepared for his years of service to the district.
Okay. All right. So this time of year is always hard on those of us who aren't ready for retirement yet, because at every meeting, somebody's retiring and heading off to some South Sea Island to enjoy themselves. Before I start speaking to Ms. Smith, would anybody else like to have anything to say? Well, I just wanna say huge congratulations to you and many thanks for your service. And as Hans Hansen always says, have as much fun as he does in retirement. I notice we haven't seen him around here since he retired from the Board, too. So I assume he's off having fun.
Fishing or hunting or something.
So I, just a big thanks on that.
I'd like to also say thanks, and I know the special education could be a difficult department to run, and thanks for your service in that capacity.
Well, thank you Brenda for your service to our district and also wish you a very happy retirement.
So I wanna say congratulations.
There we go. Go ahead.
I just wanna thank you Brenda for all your efforts to bring the changes you made that were, some of them very needed in our department to make things more effective. And then I also know and I really appreciate that your decisions that you made really kept the best interest of our students in your heart when you did that. So thank you and congratulations, and I am a bit jealous.
I'll join you in about 20 years. So yes, thank you Brenda for what you've done in the department, the way you've led the department, the innovative programs that you've brought into the department to better serve students and their needs, and for some of the different ways that we've improved the efficiency of the department. I know that it used to be a, that our contributions from the general fund used to be a larger percentage than it currently is. And I think that when there is, when there's a better balance, then there's more funds that are available for other purposes. And so thank you for helping bring and restore balance into the contributions to the department while still maintaining and meeting the needs of our students.
I'd just like to thank you for working so patiently with the business department and bringing your staff and keeping us up to date and where everybody was scheduled all the time. That schedule's always a fun one to try to track. So we appreciate your communications with us. Enjoy.
I just wanna also congratulate you, and I've always appreciated your positive spirit when we have our conversations and have fun.
I was gonna say, we probably better not say too much here. Believe it or that, or other people will start getting ideas. Yeah, sounds like a great plan to me. Except for that bit about sending our children off to college in the next few years, you know, retirement doesn't look quite so reasonable. Okay, well, could we have a motion to approve these retirements and so forth? Would you like to?
Oh, hold on a second. Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the retirement of Brenda Smith Ray, Director of Special Education, effective July 7th, 2014, and Jason Anderson, Targeted Instruction Group Teacher at Garden Village School, effective June the 7th, 2014, and the appropriate resolutions be presented recognizing their commitment to our district.
All right, all those in favor? Oh, we do need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous, you guys are permitted to retire. I always wondered what happened if we said no? I don't think so.
It still happens.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, you can't make them stay.
Can't make them not retire. I think I already tried that with some of our people. Okay, item four, Job Description for Dean of Academic Support.
If it's okay, I was gonna kinda discuss four, five, six, and seven since they're related.
Items, you mean?
The items? The items, yes.
Not the letter, not the, that might.
No. So because of our new funding formula, we do need to really focus on helping those students who, for some of the reasons we're getting a lot of that targeted money. So we have come up through the different meetings at the sites and through the different district meetings with ideas for new positions in a sense for people to provide the services for students. And so that's what these next set of job descriptions kind of go with. So Dean of Academic Support, this was one of the positions that was one of the first eliminated several years ago when we were having funding difficulties. So some of the larger sites may wish to add this back. It is an entry-level administrative position, and the primary role would be to help support student achievement and a positive school climate so that all students can strive to become proficient learners. So that's sort of the main focus of that particular job. And this would be funded from site, sites money, so it's part of the site decisions on some of how they wanna go about their student support.
I have a question, it's one position, right? One position?
It's the job description.
Right.
We're not approving.
Well, I know, but it's leading towards that, so I wanted to ask, is this position, or whatever you wanna call it, is it going to be one dean of academic support for the whole district?
No, this would be, if there was a site that chose to do that, some of our larger sites may wanna do that.
So per site?
Right, it's if a site has chosen to spend their funding that way. I don't know if there'd be anyone in this position, or there'd be a few at few different sites. One for each site, if they chose to do it.
Okay, okay.
Is that the same for all of these positions? Or descriptions, all right.
So the next one, can I, any other questions or before I go on to the next one? You know what, why don't we go ahead and vote on each one as we go, since we kind of need to do them and.
I have one question, you say it's up to the, to the site or site council to approve? You said, you say site council?
Right.
Okay, so how much money do they have?
Each school's been given 513 dollars per.
They re-approved it. Per unapproved, unduplicated students. And so the funds range between 100,000 at our, at our smallest school to 250,000 at some of our larger schools.
So this is in addition to what they normally get, or is it?
It's part of.
This was part of that LCAP presentation that Ms. McCulick and I gave, where we said it was 2.4 million dollars that was going out, and we asked for your direction to go ahead and put it out so that they can get to their school site council.
Yeah, no, I know, when we were talking big bucks, I didn't see it little like.
Yeah, the actual amount, 100,000s to 250,000.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, just asking if there's gonna be sufficient money for everything, okay? That's all. So it sounds like there will be.
Yeah, so not every school will be able to do everything, but these are the positions that as we've reviewed conversations and we've reviewed feedback, these are the positions that we currently do not have up-to-date job descriptions that school sites may wish to draw upon as they consider developing their plan. And they're almost done, they've got a couple, like a week and a half or so to go, to finish.
So they'll be doing it so that it'll be available beginning of next year, then, is that?
Yes, and then they can't hire someone we don't have a job description for.
Right, right, exactly.
So we want to have the job descriptions ready.
No, I understand that.
So we've been doing some forward planning and looking ahead and said this looks like a position that we need, let's.
Then we'll come back and we'll create the position, is that it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead on number four, take a motion to approve the creation of the job, or adoption of the job description.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the job description for Dean of Academic Support to be funded by the school's supplemental and concentration grants.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay, so then we have number five, the District Technology Integration Specialist.
So this position would be one position for the district.
Okay, thank you.
And it's funded through the LCFF funding. Obviously, there's lots of technology involved in common core, and so this is, we feel it's a really needed position. And their focus is gonna be on the integration of technology across the curriculum to build technology skills in the staff, so technology can be used, can be embedded actually, into content instruction. And they'll also help with our district technology plan and help coordinate a lot of the technology plan activities with the school sites and throughout the district.
That's enough.
We gotta start somewhere. This is a teaching position.
Okay.
So would this also be considered a restoration of lost positions in the past?
A long time ago, we had someone specially funded through a grant, but it was not district funds. This is sort of, this is funded in part to stay in alignment with Superintendent Torleksen's vision that there be individuals assigned to help with this process of transition to more technology across the curriculum on a daily basis.
So this is something that we should be looking to support long-term?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just clarifying.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, if we're ready to do it, to adopt the job description for a District Technology Integration Specialist to be funded through LCFF funds.
Second.
Forever, I mean, oops.
Wait, we got it.
Take the last forever off.
Yeah, strike that.
Okay, yep, that was, that was, after the second, that was a joke. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
That was, that was an aye, not an opposition. Okay, and number six.
Okay, this is an interesting position, it's combining something we already have and then kind of adding to that position. So for Program Director of Mental Health/Student Support Services, currently we have a half, well, we have a position, a person who half of their job is the Program Director for Mental Health Services. And that part of the job is a supervision of social, emotional, behavior services for students who do have an IEP. And what we feel we would like to add to this, the supplemental and concentration grant money, the other half of this job would be to help assure appropriate student services are delivered to students, at-risk students who do not have an IEP or other services students with IEPs may need. And part of this also would be not only looking at some of the services, but student discipline, attendance issues, and also encouraging a lot of parent involvement. This would be one position for the district.
Okay, so we already have one?
For one person.
We have someone who, who does the, halftime does the special ed portion of it for students with IEPs. And we wanna make it a full job, working for both students with IEPs and at-risk students without IEPs.
Oh, so this is, okay, I was gonna, I was thinking you're having two program directors for mental health, one doing student support and the other one doing the IGs.
So you wanna make it one full-time position?
So a full-time position, okay, I got it.
Will they have assistants? That's, that's a lot for one person.
So they will, they'll help oversee the programs at the school sites. So we also have the counselors that are at each middle school. So they'll help coordinate their efforts and work with school principals to implement positive behavior intervention systems and just be able to provide an overarching, consistent support mechanism for some of the socio-emotional, mental health needs of all of our students. So right now, there's just one person district-wide who can help pull all that together and make sure that school X and school Y have similar approaches and can identify successful approaches and say, let's do this at all of our sites.
Okay, and what are some of the requirements for the position?
This is an administrative position, and so preferred qualifications would be an administrative credential, the People's Services credential, which would be the counseling.
Yes, yeah.
And a master's degree.
Okay.
And I imagine as, this is a full-time position, and as we start seeing the other needs that we have, we can always come back to adding some position that would help them too, so.
Yes, with all of these, it's sort of like, let's do this, see how far that gets us, and if we need to do more, we would come back for more.
We're making a starting place.
Okay.
So right now, do we have a student support services person?
Well, it's sort of Sandy McCulick.
All right.
In addition to the LCAP and many other things, she's been doing part of that.
But not all of those, not, there are new duties here that don't, that nobody's doing. There's some, there's quite a bit of new duties in student support that, that nobody currently has on there.
You're talking about like the coordination of the PBIS, aren't?
Oh, I can see you guys, through the years, we've been having less services, I feel, for our students. Anything we can do, and we get the funds to do it, we need to bring back the services for our children, really.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
We used to have a huge amount of physicians that really dealt with helping students. So let, let's go with it, and then we can always add more to it.
All right, well, we're just getting a clarification of what it is. We support adding, of course.
I didn't say you weren't, I didn't say that, I'm just encouraging you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the job description for Program Director for Mental Health/Student Support Services. Second.
You wanna say where it's funded from?
No.
That's essential. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, great. And let me, our number seven, our Student Support Resource Teacher.
This is a new position, and this would be funded from sites if they chose to do that through their school site councils, using the supplemental and concentration grant. So it's possible there could be one, up to, I suppose, 14 student support teachers throughout the district. This is a teaching position, and the role is to provide, it's part of our response to intervention services to students, and to support teachers in delivering those services, and to help in providing programs that also contribute to a positive school climate. So this person would work a lot with small groups of students and with classroom teachers.
Again, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure, this is my area, so I, I wanna make sure, it's all good. What are the requirements for the, someone applying for the position?
It would be that you have your teaching credential and people at that site, or people who are interested in it. Well, we're probably gonna have people, you know, talk about why they feel they're qualified to meet this job description, we'll have people do a letter of intent, I think, for the position.
Okay.
And it's interesting, because so many of our great classroom teachers don't wanna leave the classroom, yet it would be wonderful if some people would choose to do this, because they can affect many more students that way. So it's gonna be interesting to see, you know, who's, who's willing to leave their room and come forward and do a little bigger job in the sense of reaching more students.
It sounds like this position, if done properly, would work really well with number six. If they were hand in hand, it could be a great thing.
Yes, and I think the position also is broad enough in scope that each school will select, no, I don't think one person can do everything that's on there, but they may select, we want this to be more socio-mental, mental health focused, or we want this to be more academic focused on this subject area, or we want these subject areas to be addressed. And so the individuals filling that would need to be able to demonstrate that they can do that aspect that the school site council is making the determination.
Just, just for the record, I just looked here, so the specific qualifications are the teaching credential, ELP authorization, and at least three years' teaching experience. It's in the backup material. I've got my, you know, handy dandy cheat pad here.
Well, since Ms. Hopkins brought up, you know, certain things that have more questions now, how many of our current teachers are being encouraged to apply for these positions? And does Ms. Dart wanna say anything about any of these?
We don't, we don't know, these positions, once you create the job description, then school sites can access it, and then we can know. We're imagining, like, there could be as few, up to, there could be as few as one at every school site, or it could be multiple at school sites.
At each site, right.
We don't, yeah, so they can't assign people until we've approached the job description.
All right. Just noted. Well, really, I just wanted to hear from Melinda or the teachers, so.
Yeah, so Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. So as a, as a whole, I believe teachers are happy to see positions coming in to help students. I have already talked to Ms. Hopkins a couple of times, because I was concerned about how people would apply and how they would be chosen. So, and I am concerned too, also, and maybe I'll just ask a question, the site decision of how, of whether or not to have these things, I hope that that's truly a democratic decision of the whole staff at the site. Because what happens is when the rumors start coming out, there will be these positions, people start calling me and saying, we're told we are going to have this. So when I hear that, it makes me think that people are not saying, let us all discuss, do we want this? And I'd rather hear that that's going on out there. But, so, but I know all these things are new, and that change is, you know, often causes, you know.
Rumbles.
Fusion and, and, you know, anxiety. So I'm thinking as the positions are approved, you know, hopefully we could agree on a, on a format. When a position is administrative, then that's a committee that is outside the purveyance of teachers. In other words, it's a district committee that, well, we take part in the hiring of principals, that is, we have positions on those committees. But the dean position has never, teachers have never taken part on that committee. So I would like to see that there be a teacher position on all hiring committees, even for deans. A dean is sometimes an entry into the district, and I think that they should see representatives at that hiring committee table from all stakeholders, so that they know who those groups are as they come in to the district, or as they interview. About the, the student resource, student support resource teacher, I feel that teachers at the site, Ms. Hopkins and I agree that they should put forth a statement or a letter of intent saying they would like the job. And then, then, you know, how would they be chosen? You know, ultimately, in our contract, the principal has the right to assign jobs within a school. But I personally wish that there was a little more group, you know, input into that. Say the leadership team at the site would, you know, talk about it, what the needs maybe are there, of what the focus of the position is. I just want teachers that, that have been asking so long for help for students to be able to have a say in the direction that that help goes and what the needs that they see are. I guess the actual choosing of a person, you know, choosing their own colleague could be awkward, so perhaps it is.
Or not choosing their own colleague.
Or not choosing could be even more awkward, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, it's a new process. And the integration, the Technology Integration Specialist, is that considered administrative or?
No, it's a teacher.
No, teaching.
Okay, a teacher on special assignment, okay. All right, so those are my questions, and that's my input thus far.
Thank you for your input. That does actually raise the point that these, these positions that would be funded through school site money, that is determined by the school site councils, and it does behoove us to make sure that our school site councils are properly constituted and properly run and are not sort of being told what to do by the principals or others. These do need. These do need to be genuine decision-making bodies and that's always a challenge.
That's always the intent.
It's always the intent and it's always a bit of a challenge.
But sometimes some of the members may not be versed in what you're looking for in a candidate either, so.
Right.
That is true.
So that's why I think what Melinda's saying is, is good. You need a little bit more, they don't have to be the decision-maker, but at least be there to ask the proper questions. And, because we've done that before in other jobs.
So on the agenda is approving the job description, so let's get back to that.
Oh, I know, but it's, it's good to talk about it early, okay.
That does actually make one realize that the job, job descriptions do not include how a position is filled and at what point do we have, I mean, are, you know, presumably there are protocols, they must be written somewhere.
Yes, we can get that information to you.
Yeah, okay, I just, yeah, it'd be good to know. I hadn't really processed that that's not part of the job description is how we fill it, okay. So could we have a motion on the student support resource teacher?
I'll make a motion that we approve the job description for student support resource teacher to be funded through the school's site supplemental and concentration grants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, another unanimous approval, okay. We come to classified personnel and more retirement.
Yes, it is that time of year. The first person retiring here.
Oh, I'm sorry, there we go. We request that we have appropriate resolution for Mary Ann Nash, who's currently the production assistant at our central kitchen. And she has been employed with the district since nineteen ninety-eight.
Does that mean cook?
No, actually not. It's more in terms of the bigger picture, you know, getting things ordered, supplies, food, scheduling, a lot of things like that. And she also helps out on the line as needed.
So is this going to be, refilled, this position?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're in the process right now of figuring out how to organize the department to better serve our needs and so.
Alright.
It may, may be filled, it may not be. It else may come up, so.
Alright.
And I want to say that Ms. Nash was the lunch lady at Tobias through most of the time that my boys were there. And even though they didn't take lunches, we all knew her, wonderful, wonderful person who really interacted with and cared about all the students.
That's great.
So appreciate her service at the individual schools as well as at the central kitchen in the last couple of years, so.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the retirement requests from Mary Ann Nash, production assistant, effective six thirteen fourteen, and an appropriate resolution be prepared commending for her for her years of service with the district.
And I will second that with thanks and congratulations. And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And no opposition, there we go. Well, Mary Ann, have a great time in retirement too.
She's not here.
Okay, and number two, we have a resignation.
Yes, it's a resignation request really for the purpose of retirement. Celine Baradas has been an instructional aide in our district since nineteen seventy-eight.
Whoa.
She's at Woodrow Wilson School and so of course, we do want her to be commended for all the service she has done for our district.
Nineteen seventy-eight, do you guys realize I was three?
What? I'm not admitting how old I was.
She's obviously very dedicated to working and helping our students.
Well, knowing Celine for many years, and I'm not embarrassed to say I've known her for a long time. She's a fantastic employee and she's been here for a long time, yes. And she's been very dedicated to our district, so with that, I would like to, and I was going to ask you, what was the two items, one and two? Why does one start off with retirement and one says resignation when they're both retirement?
Well, in the sense it depends on one's definition of retirement, it's not a full-time employee retiring into a puerce or stearse retirement.
But she, she has a retirement coming.
She may, I don't know.
She does.
I'm sorry, she.
She has a retirement coming. They get retirement, no matter how many.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying she's retiring, but it just depends on how one defines retirement, that's all.
Oh.
It's legalese language.
Right.
Okay.
Sometimes people don't like to close the door and they like to say they're resigning, I see, sometimes.
Okay, but you, you do say for a purpose of retirement, so it's just, okay, never mind. Think it should be retirement, that's all. Okay, so I'm going to make the motion that we accept the retirement of Celine Baradas, instructional aide from Woodrow Wilson, effective six, six fourteen. And then a letter of accommodation be prepared for her years of service to the district.
Is it okay to make it retirement in the motion?
I made the motion.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to give us any trouble.
Of course, it's been alright for years, so go ahead.
Okay.
God.
Give me a second. Did I have a, did I hear a second?
Well, I was confused because it was changed as well, but I'll second it.
It's not changed, it's a retirement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I want to say she's been setting a great example to all the students in our district by coming into the library many times a week, all these years too.
She's also done a lot of volunteer work as well. A lot of volunteer work.
Okay. Now, if everybody is done making us feel bad because we don't get to retire, we move on to item five, the school parent community liaison. So it's another new position?
Right, another new position. I mean, years ago, for a very short time, we had a parent liaison at Susan B. Anthony School. But, so this is sort of similar to what was done before, but tweaked a little bit for the purposes of our LCAP and LCFF funding. So the basic function, and this would be a classified position, it would come from site funds. So again, it's, you know, a decision on which sites feel they may have this need. And the basic function here would be support family engagement to help support student learning and school programs. This person would really help beyond what we're already doing, promote parent participation in school and in the education of their children. So there'd be, you know, looking at parent ed programs, some school-wide parent activities and help recruit and organize school volunteers even beyond what's already happening.
So now we're creating the job as well as, we don't yet have the, are we using the old, are we using the old job spec or we?
We, there are some job duties attached to this as well.
So it's, but it's not the old one, it's the new one?
It's been revised.
Okay, so, so we're approving both things?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve.
Question first, now, I just want to make sure it's funded through the school, that's money the school is giving.
These are funded from the school site funds, yes.
Okay.
So again, it would be up to individual schools to decide if they want to fill that position.
That's right.
Okay.
So we could have anywhere from one to fourteen.
Correct.
Or I suppose none to fourteen.
Yeah.
Let's hope they don't.
People have at least one since it was a big issue for a couple of schools.
Yeah, I think it will be, yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, the position of school parent community liaison. Or I should say, create the position. Okay, create the position of school parent community liaison. And, and to recommend adoption of the job description or job duties, is it job description?
Is job duties the part that the board does for classified?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, another unanimous decision. This item six, the, the classified job titles and duties, we have had a request to table this as the CSEA has requested to negotiate all aspects of the study. So we will be tabling that. And that brings us down to the section six, board policies. And we have the second reading of our August twenty thirteen board policy revisions. Do we have any comments, corrections or discussions of them?
I think last time we all were okay with that, weren't we?
I have none.
I'm good.
No.
Okay, well, and perhaps we could.
Are we going to make a motion?
I'll make it. Give me a second.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the, as a second reading, the board, board policies and administrative regulations of August two thousand and thirteen, board policy revisions. And do you want me to list them? No?
No.
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And no opposition, another unanimous decision. Okay, do we have any reports from board members?
Reports, but I don't know if it was mentioned in the beginning, I don't remember it, but I'd like to close in a moment of silence for Torin Moss.
No reports. Yeah, yeah. Just comments that, you know, as we're approving job descriptions and positions and discussing these things, we should still remember though that we can't spend all the money and that we have to be careful to make sure we have some for when I'm off the board and just down the line.
There will be another recession.
Yeah. That's it.
No irrational exuberance? Any reports or?
No. And I have nothing to report, I think everything I had to say, I said earlier. Do we have any further requests of anybody to address the board? Then we are going to close the public portion of the meeting with a moment of silence in honor, I'm sorry to say, of several members of our district. Danielle Peace, daughter of Kathy Peace, who is the food service assistant at Daniel Webster. Robert Moss, from the campus supervisor at Fernando Rivera, who's worked for the district for over fourteen years as a warehouse driver and campus supervisor and even as a computer tech. And also John James Casey, brother of Carolyn Casey, principal of John F. Kennedy School. So if we could have a moment of silence in memory of these three members of our community. Thank you, so we will take a brief recess before we convene to close session.